Let's do that all over again. Welcome, everybody, to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board Meeting for February right here at the Kamaki Public Library. It is 6:30 PM, so we'll get right into our agenda. The first order of business is filling vacancies. Actually, we just have one vacancy in Sub District Two. That's generally Wilhelmina Rise area. Are there any volunteers to put their name in the ring to volunteer for this vacancy, either in person or online? Sir, would you like to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Hello, everybody. My name is Woody. I am new to the neighborhood. I just like to be involved and get to know everybody. And I have a little bit of experience of running a company and so on. And I moved from Virginia, Washington DC area. We've been here for a while. I'm looking forward to establish this long-term residency in Hawaii. We love it. We enjoy it. My wife, my three kids love it.
Great. Appreciate you coming out. Any questions from the board?
Oh, I run my own company. I am owner of the chain restaurant, about sixty restaurants we have in East Coast called Meza. Mediterranean, something like Chipotle type of restaurant. Not yet, not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet, yeah. Yeah, most of my work is over in the East Coast.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other volunteers to fill the vacancy, either in person or online? Seeing none. Okay, thank you very much. So Jeffrey, do we need to take a vote by roll call or?
So with testing, one, two, three, there we go. So with him volunteering, somebody from the board would have to nominate him, and then we'll do a roll call vote. He has to get the quorum vote of six to be elected to the board.
So do I have a motion to nominate? And I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your full name. Can you state your full name again?
Woody.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay. Great. I have a motion to have Mr. Sally join the board. So nominated, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess we'll just beat you by one second, so.
Well, for seconds.
Okay, so Jeffrey, if you don't mind calling the roll call, please.
All right, so again, the individual that has been nominated has to receive the quorum vote of six. For those members, that board members that are online, if you wouldn't mind turning on your camera for the vote, if not, please unmute. That way I can just clearly hear that that is your vote. Again, I'll just go down the list as I have it. Board Member Log. Saito, online. Rose, are able to un- oh, sorry, I interrupted you. Travis, one more time.
Oh, no problem. Aye.
Smith Kohane.
Aye.
Aguilera, online.
Aye.
Gardner, online.
I am not sure what's up with my camera, but aye.
We are filling a vacancy of the volunteer nominated here in the personal, in the physical meeting room. Just to clarify, your vote is aye?
Aye, yes, sorry, aye.
Board Member Murakami, unavailable at the time, not online. Board Member Hope. Board Member Abbe. And Board Member Chung. Was that a aye? With that, the resident Woody has received a quorum vote. Chair, if you'd like to take a quick recess, I could do his oath of office. If not, you can go with the monthly reports. I could do it outside.
Yeah, if we don't mind just going on with monthly reports, and we'll just take care of that. All right, thank you very much, and congratulations. So Jeffrey's gonna go ahead and swear you in outside, and then, and then you'll be back. So we, in the meantime, we're just gonna move on with the agenda with the Honolulu Fire Department Monthly Reports.
Good evening, firefighter Hope, ladder five, third watch. The statistics for February fires, we had one nuisance, one, two activated alarms that weren't, no fire. Emergencies, we had seventy-four medicals, four motor vehicle crashes and collisions. Three hazardous material incidents, and the fire safety tip for the month of February is power outage preparedness. There are a few ways you and your family can be prepared for power outage. Repair your supplies. Ensure your flashlights, radios contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Prepare your family. Check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you have a plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water. Set your fridge and freezer to the coldest setting. Keep them closed as much as possible during the outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics. Unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surge. Never touch down power lines. Always assume lines are energized and dangerous. And for more safety tips, visit honolulu.gov/DEM. And learn more about power outages at Hawaiianelectric.com/stormcenter. Any questions?
All right, thank you, firefighter Hope. Any questions? Go ahead, Sergeant.
Yes, yes, I think there was a, yes, yes, there was a, there was an accident, yeah, and it took, it didn't, the pole didn't fall down, but the line got rattled and broke because of that. Yeah, we were aware. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the monthly reports? If not, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to the Honolulu Police Department Monthly Reports.
Good evening. I'll start with the monthly stats. So there's fourteen motor vehicle thefts, fifteen previous, ten burglaries, and ten the previous month. Twenty-six thefts, twenty-seven the previous month, fifteen unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases with thirteen the previous month. Total calls for service for January. And the safety tip for the month, I'd like to talk about flash flood preparedness. What you need to know, learn the best routes to high ground where you live, work, and play. Travel should, and travel should you need to evacuate. If your area is prone to flooding, keep emergency materials on hand such as sandbags, wood, and plastic sheeting. Do not allow children to play near streams or drainage ditches. These areas can quickly become deadly. If your vehicle stalls in a flooded area, get out as soon as possible. Flood waters can rise rapidly and sweep away a vehicle and its occupants. Do not attempt to drive or move a vehicle through flooded areas because parts of the road may already be washed out over the water much deeper than it appears. When hiking, use extreme caution anytime heavy rain threatens. Even though rain falls upstream, a stream can cause flash flood within. Do not cross streams unless the flash flooding completely subsides. And you can find more of this information on Department of Emergency Management at honolulu.gov/DEM. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department on the agenda? Lori Yamada.
I mean, yay, okay.
Go ahead.
Last meeting, January, I asked about a traffic accident on January eighth around four thirty. Intersection of Sixteenth and Wai'li. Was wondering what this, what happened then?
So I have the report. It's a minor police, it's a minor report which doesn't give the details of how the accident happened. But it usually under accident results in minor damage with no, no injuries. So I, I know for, I know that that accident had no injuries with minor damage. It appears one of the car was a rental car and possibly a tourist.
Okay, great, thank you. Nobody's hurt, yay. But something was to be done about, you know, that intersection. I thought there was talk about changing the timing of the lighting, of the lights or something, or adding a left lane only kind of jazz in the future. You know?
Okay.
Don't know. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Lori. Any other questions or comments for the Honolulu Police Department on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Appreciate it. Thanks for the report.
Good night.
Good night. All right, we're gonna move on to the Board of Water Supply. It's Lorna Heller, online.
I'm here. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, very good. Hi, everybody. I do have two main breaks to report for January. One, they're both on six inch. One happened on January thirtieth, the other one on January thirty-first. The one that happened on the thirtieth was on the Sixteenth Avenue, and the one on the thirty-first occurred, oh, she's also on the Sixteenth Avenue. The announcement I have for this month is water waste hotline. So if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know so that we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. There's three ways to report the water waste. You can visit our website at www.bordofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. The second one is to email, contactus@hbws.org. And the last one is to call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. Just wanna encourage everybody to make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious unlimited water supply. Because water is life. That's all I have for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you, Lorna. Any questions for the Board of Water Supply from the board members present or online? Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Lorna. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to public input. This is the portion of the agenda that the public may comment on items not on our agenda. However, the board may not take any action on any of those comments. So this evening, do we have any public input? Sir, go ahead.
My name is Kelsin Kai. I'm actually a resident of Palolo, but I use the Route 200 to get around a lot. So I would like to take this time to let you know how much Route 200 in its current iteration has positively impacted my life, as well as other residents of Palolo, Kamaki, and Kapo'ulu, and made their lives better. It has allowed for much greater access to our community and beyond, providing one-seat rides to many destinations throughout our vibrant communities, as well as seamless transfers to other routes in the bus's newly enhanced route network. Kiki from all of our neighborhoods are now able to access educational facilities such as Kamaki High School and KCC, thanks to Route 200. Access to UH Mono by easy transfer to Route 13 is now available to many students that reside in both of our neighborhoods because of this new route. This board's proposal to reroute the 200 will have a significant and detrimental impact to our lives. It will significantly increase the travel times by up to twenty to thirty minutes each way. And these increases in travel times will be most detrimental during rush hour where transit is the most effective. These negative changes will not only exacerbate the perceived socioeconomic discrepancies between our communities and tear us even further apart instead of bringing us together. DTS is already doing a good job with its limited resources and providing redundant service that this proposal would do, would be a waste of these limited resources and would negatively impact those who actually use this bus, as well as all of Honolulu's taxpayers. This board's proposal to reroute the 200 would create a redundant service through the areas already serviced by the bus. Routes one, one L, two, two L, three, seven, and fourteen already provide service to the Wai'li, Coco Head, and Eighteenth Avenue section proposed by this board. And with routes one, two, and three providing extremely frequent service, that needs no augmentation from what would be a redundant Route 200 addition. If these changes are to be implemented, people traveling from UH Mono and KCC would be faced with a three-bus ride home instead of a one- or two-seat ride that is currently available to them. It would also significantly increase the time it takes to get from the KCC area to Market City and Lower Kamaki. I understand the desire to reinstate Ma'apu'tumakai service along that Eighteenth Avenue corridor, and this could easily be, easily be accomplished by extending the existing Route Three to its original terminus near the Old Lili'oh Kalani School on Coco Head and Wai'li Avenue. The concerns received along Sixth and Aloha Avenue corridors are shared by all of us. And we are, and we're always present even before Route 200 is implemented. Using the bus as a skateboard and punishing those who don't have a voice are the most vulnerable is not very porno. We need to work together as a community to find a better solution to improve Aloha Avenue. Pushing for complete streets along this vital corridor that has become quite heavily trafficked as of late is essential. Rerouting this essential route with the fastest growing ridership in the system is not a solution and will be a detriment to our communities. So I implore you, members of the board, to reconsider this misguided proposal that will negatively impact my life if implemented, as well as many of the other, many other lives of this community. And I suggest you take a ride on the 200, use it, and see how much of an asset it has become to our community. Talk story with us and see the community we've built on board, and try to see the many benefits of our great public transportation network. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kai. Do we have any other public input this evening? Oh, sure, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Daylin Cam. I live in the Wai'li Kahala area, but I currently go to UH. And I, while I don't personally live in Palolo, I know many people that do that go to KCC. And it is a very fast, convenient way for them to get there that would be much prolonged if this current, if the current Route 200 were to be butchered. And at least for me, I frequently go to KCC because I have friends there and I study with them. They go to UH. It's very convenient, and I would hate to see that change. While I do understand there are many safety concerns, as Mr. Kai mentioned, there are many, many streets like those where the bus stop is basically just a sign on the side of road next to a dirt path. If we were to remove every single bus route that ran along inadequate pedestrian infrastructure roads like that, we would not have a bus system, all right? And I understand that those are serious safety concerns and they need to be addressed, but those, it should not be addressed by simply removing the bus. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public input this evening? In person or online? Nope. All right, all right. Thanks very much to those who provided input this evening. All right, so we're gonna move on to community updates. First off, the Kamaki Business and Professional Association. It's Ivan or two. Or a Calvin.
Yeah, I'm here. Just to say that, no report for this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Calvin. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So we're gonna move on to presentations and discussions. First off, we have a presentation by the Hawaii Bicycling League and Eric McCutcheon. Eric, take it away.
All right, good evening. Welcome, Woody. I have been sharing about micro mobility, that is, options to cars, especially one person in one car going one, two, or three miles. So, welcome. Just a little humor there on the board. Road Rage 2025, it's a Segway and an electric foot scooter, flashy. Hey. But anyway, title is more bills. So it is a new legislative session. City and state have been busy. So let's see what's going on in the micro mobility world. Next slide. Remember, we talked about this. This is a city bill, or the city and county of Honolulu, I should say. And it was recommending a change to the revised ordinances of Honolulu, defining wheelie. This is still active, though we may not need it because, next slide. Bill fifty-two passed. All right, so this is now law, signed in the newspaper today, if you look. And basically, it is sort of saying that electric bicycles have motors of seven hundred fifty watts maximum. It defines safe driving, and in part of that is no wheelies. So Wai'li Avenue should be wheelie-free as of yesterday. And helmets eighteen, up from sixteen. Yeah, quite a change. Of course, I advocate helmets to sixty-two and hopefully beyond. All righty, so look in the paper for that one. Watch the paper over the next, ooh, weeks and months for these upcoming state bills. Some of these might be House, some of these might be Senate, but there's at least four bills active right now also looking to change the helmet requirement statewide to eighteen. Lots of supporting testimony for that one. Next. A number of bills looking to increase the minimum age to operate an electric bicycle to sixteen, up from fifteen. And a lot of positive testimony for that. Okay, next slide. Even more bills to sort of try to define what are electric bicycles? What are these things? And this is a sort of a common way of doing it nationwide, making three classes. Class one, you have pedal assist to twenty miles an hour, cuts out. Class two has that pedal assist like class one, plus a throttle. Is turn your thumb up to twenty miles an hour, it cuts off. And class three, a pedal assist to twenty-eight miles per hour. A lot of bills looking at that, but it is kind of hard to tell what those bikes are when you see them going past you. Well, there's another bill, or a bunch of bills for educational materials out there. Might be labels, might be materials, brochures, flyers, public service announcements, signs. And that this, this information could come from the counties, could come from the state, the manufacturers, the retailers. It could be pushed out to the public or the purchasers, okay? So there's a lot of interest in getting the word out, what are these devices on the road? And you can see in the picture, that would be a proposed label, or it's an active label for a class three. So then you can see right away, ah, I know that bike can go twenty-eight miles an hour. I know it's got a motor. And I should probably be a little careful around it. It's a little faster than, than bikes that don't have that class three label on it. So it gives you a little information just by that quick view. Other things going on. There's a couple of bills looking at the actual motor and the relationship between the hardware and the software in these vehicles. Whether you can modify it, remove it, upgrade it. Little more tricky opposition and support for these bills, depending how they're written, and it's very, they're very difficult bills to watch. But let's see if the state is gonna get really technical about motors, hardware, and software. A little more. And the word electric micro mobility device is maybe going to become actual term, legal term. Okay, and what, what the sense of what's going on with a few of these bills is trying to kind of account for all of these low-speed devices you see. Two wheels, four wheels, one wheel, and the kind of consensus is to maybe kind of say they're kind of like electric foot scooters. The law should be like them. Trick is electric foot scooters, you know, it's like fifteen miles an hour, helmets required to sixteen. This is the way the law is written now, so it's a little out of sync. We'll have to see how these bills might work out, but it's good they're thinking about what do we do? What are the laws for these sort of smaller, low-speed devices? Well, of course, what's next? High-speed devices, right? There's a lot of things on the road that go really, really fast. Two wheels, three wheels, four wheels. What do we do with those? How do we classify them? What are the laws for those? Where can they go? That thing on the bottom right of the screen is an electric bicycle. I don't know if you can see those operable pedals, two tandem wheels. Seventy-five miles an hour. Out of the box, seventy-five miles an hour. We probably should have some law to deal with them because they are on our roads, right? So let's see, let's see what they do. At least four bills touching on that. Oh my gosh, I don't know how many bills there are. Talking about what I called ARSIL, right? Registration, not safety, at least you don't have to worry about that. Insurance, license for the operator, license for the device or the vehicle. Wow, a lot of things to think about. Insurance agencies, right? Medical, law, how young, how old, do we, do we need annual registration for bicycles? Do we want that? Lot of opposition to a lot of this registration, insurance, and licensing for especially these low-speed devices and vehicles. We'll see how it goes. See who wins that battle. And a couple more, a couple more things to look for. All right, couple of bills, not as many people kind of willing to try to define what is safe riding, but some of the ideas coming out of the discussions within the state are, again, no wheelies, really taking care of that behavior. But some other ideas that, you know, are kind of comfortable with class one and class two bikes going ten miles an hour on the sidewalk. Up to ten miles an hour, up to ten miles on the side. You might be comfortable with that, you might not be comfortable with that. Again, if you want to get testimony, please do. And this bill also, and a lot of other bills are starting to touch again, we're at, come back to mopeds. What are mopeds? Where can they be? How fast can they go? Should they be in the bike lane, not in the bike lane? Okay, we'll see how that goes. Okay, that's gonna be, again, a lot of maybe contention on that one. We're almost there. I think we can all get behind this one and get a lot of positive testimony for this. Expanding eligibility and the amount of rebates for buying these alternatives to cars. Okay, a lot of people, it's all you need, something small, something easy to get around, plug it in and go. So hopefully, we can get more rebates on more devices. Everyone, bottom line, though, ride safely, share the road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric. It's on, I think it is on. Any quick questions for Eric? Okay, seeing none, you must have covered it all. Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're gonna move on to a presentation by the City Department of Environmental Services, and this is in regard to the increase in sewer charges.
Aloha, board, community members. My name is Mike O'Keefe. I'm the deputy director at the city's Department of Environmental Services, and I'm gonna just run through our proposal to increase sewer fees this evening. That proposal, I should clarify, is currently being considered by the city council. It's Bill sixty. Our sewer fees are in the revised ordinances of Honolulu, so it requires a, a bill to change those fees, and that's what Bill sixty proposes to do. But before I get into the details of the proposed increase, I just wanna review at a high level what our department does, and I think that'll provide some important context and maybe an appreciation for why we need to increase fees. So our department, the Department of Environmental Services, we handle all of the city's solid waste and wastewater infrastructure on Oahu. On the solid waste side, that's the city's waste-to-energy facility, H-Power, the Waimea Ala'ok'och' landfill. We have seven refuse and recycling drop-off locations around the island. We call them convenience centers. We have three transfer stations, and we also manage all of the trucks that you see going through the neighborhoods, picking up the three carts at your homes. That's on the solid waste side. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the wastewater side, what we do on the wastewater side. And so the city's wastewater system consists of twenty-one hundred miles of sewer pipes in the ground. Those sewer pipes collect wastewater from residences, structures, funnel the wastewater to one of seventy-two pump stations located around the island. And those pump stations pump the water to be treated to one of nine treatment plants. And we have a staff in the department of about nine hundred people that that work twenty four hours a day, seven days a week to make all that happen. I also want to clarify, you know, before I get into a discussion on the on the proposed rate increases that our department on the waste, our wastewater program at the at the city and county portal was Department of Environmental Services. We're required to be self sustaining. So the money that we take in from sewer fees goes to pay for all of that wastewater activity. I just talked about operating and maintaining the twenty one hundred miles of sewer pipe and so on. So in other words, we don't take any money from from the general fund, from from pop, money you pay through property taxes or anything else. We're completely self sustaining. And as such, we need to, we need to raise our fees to pay for increasing costs like, for example, we haven't, we haven't raised rates, our sewer fees since twenty sixteen. But like everyone else, like we've all experienced cost increases since then. And so it is time for us to raise our rates to keep up with those cost increases, to pay for just the ongoing day to day operation and maintenance of our wastewater program. But also our our large looming construction program, we call it the capital improvement program. And just a little bit of detail on that. We have a capital improvement program that is valued at about ten point one billion dollars between twenty twenty five and twenty forty. That a large part of that capital improvement program is is regulatory driven. In other words, it's to pay for projects that were required to do by law. One of the biggest projects, about a two point five billion dollar project is to upgrade the Sand Island wastewater treatment plant. That's the wastewater treatment plant that services this this community, the wastewater that this community generates. There's a number of other things that I won't go into too much more detail that 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 are covered in the construction program. It's 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 to upgrade and maintain the sewer system so there's not sewer leaks in the community. Replace old and aging infrastructure, prepare particularly the our coastal infrastructure for the impacts of climate change. And actually expand energy and resource recovery projects at the plant. Doing so offsets our our operating costs. If we can, for example, capture the methane that's created from digesting sewage sludge, we can use that methane to generate electricity. And that offsets the need to buy electricity from ECO. Our electric bill at at the Department of Environmental Services for the wastewater operation is forty million dollars a year. So I keep talking about rates, how much are rates going to go up? Or are they proposed to go up, I should say? So what we're proposing to do is we've 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 introduced a ten year package, rate proposal increase package, and that's in the that's in Bill sixty, as I mentioned at the beginning. And so the the proposal is that rates would increase by a percent, a certain percent every year. For the first six years of that ten year package, rates are proposed to go up by nine percent each year for six years. For years seven, eight, nine and ten of that ten year package, it drops from eight percent to seven percent to six percent to five percent. So it tapers off at the end. Cumulatively, for that ten years, it's a hundred and fifteen percent increase. So it's a large increase, there's no, there's no denying that. But as I hope, as I hope that explained, it's it's to fund a very large construction program that's designed to upgrade aging infrastructure, comply with regulatory required projects as well as fund our increasing operation and maintenance costs. I'd encourage you, I handed this flyer out to to some of the board members, but I'd encourage you to take a, take a copy over on the table there. It gives you a, gives you a sample of what your average wastewater bill will look like under this proposal. It's on the back page on the bottom, on the bottom half of that page. You know, so in addition, is a lot, just say two more things here real quick. In addition to the proposal to increase fees, sewer fees, we're also doing two new, proposing two new changes to the program. For those of you who are familiar with the sewer bill right now, you know that it's, it consists of two charges. There's a, there's a, every month, there's one part of the charge is a fixed charge, we call it a base charge. It doesn't, it doesn't change no matter how much water you use, it's the same amount every month. The second charge is a volumetric charge that fluctuates with the amount of water you use. Now typically on your average sewer bill, that base charge comprises about seventy percent of the bill. And the fixed charge is about thirty percent on on your average bill. What we're proposing to do with our rate increase is shift that percentage to fifty fifty, so fifty fifty fixed and fifty volumetric. And what we've, what we've heard from some stakeholder advisory groups that we convene to inform the development of this rate package was that our customers want greater control over the ability to lower their sewer bill. So I mentioned that the volumetric charge, you use, you use less water, you get charged less. So that's what we did in increasing that volumetric charge from thirty percent of the bill to fifty percent of the bill. You use less water, you just, you don't get charged as much. So that's one key component, shifting from seventy thirty fixed volumetric to fifty fifty. The second, second element is something that we've never done before. We've never had a customer assistance program before. So recognizing that the proposed changes that we are, that we are asking city council to adopt are not small. We are proposing for the first time a customer assistance program that would specifically help low income customers with their, with manage this increase, basically. And so what that entails is every year our department is going to dedicate ten million dollars to this customer assistance program. And folks will have to apply, you have to go through income verification. And there'll have to be a re verification at certain points throughout the year. But basically, if you meet a qualification level, you'll become eligible to get a twenty to thirty dollar a month credit on your sewer bill, lowering the bill by twenty to thirty dollars a month. I mentioned ten million dollars to do that. We think that 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 ten million dollars, we've done some analysis, we think that that will cover the entire population that we intend to target with this, with this program, which is eighty percent AMI and below. So that's it, that's all I really wanted to talk about tonight. I know it's a lot of information. I typically get a lot of questions about the proposal, so I'm happy to take some now.
All right, great, thanks, Mike. So do we have any questions from, first from the board, either in person or online? Audrey?
Yeah. I had asked this, hello. I had asked this question before at another meeting, but if a single family home has an ADU, is that going to increase more than just a regular single family? Because I know there's a base fee and right now, so there's two base fees, one for the ADU and for the single family, I believe. So just wanted to know how this is going to impact.
This is a great, this is a great question, and it's a detail of the proposal that I didn't necessarily go into. So as you noted, right now, there's basically two, the ADU is treated as its own single family home. Under the proposal, the ADU charge will be less. I think it's about, don't quote me on this, but I think it's it's twenty to thirty percent less. That fixed charge is twenty to thirty percent less than a single home, family home pays.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
Thanks so much. As your department are running like on a budget, do you have a deficit for past many years? Or you've been doing okay with the budget all these years?
Yes, thank you for asking that. We're, we're, we're in the black, so, and we're required to be actually. We, as part of how we fund our operations, we we generate revenue from, from our rate payers through sewer fees. And we, we issue, we take out debt to pay for projects, including selling wastewater revenue bonds, municipal bonds, municipal securities to pay for our large projects that have, you know, a useful life of thirty years or beyond, which most of our projects do. So I mentioned that because as part of the requirement to to sell bonds, we, we have to assure that our bondholders that we have maintained certain levels of cash in our, in our coffers. And so we've never, we have a requirement to do that. We've never dipped below, since the program's been in existence since in the mid nineties, we've never dipped below that that cash reserve requirement.
Okay, any other questions from anyone from the public as well?
I have a question.
Yeah.
But this is a tangent, this is not necessarily pertaining to this. There was a proposal to build a satellite wastewater treatment plant that on the Alaika golf course between the second and fifth hole. I heard the proposal by Kennedy Changs at the neighborhood board, Capitol board years ago. And I heard that that proposal died, that project died for whatever reason. Can you tell me why it died and would it ever be resurrected so that the golf course can use, that golf course can use recycled water?
Good question, I'm not familiar with that project, but I can, I can get back to the board with an answer on the history there.
Any other questions online or in person? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Sort of follow on Woody's, I understand that you've always been in the black. And I understand that you've not raised our rates for thirteen years. But that still seems unusual from a business perspective. So rather than hit us with a hundred and ten, it was never a thought to spread that pain out?
Yeah, it's a great question. And so, so when, when this administration, the Blengiardi administration came into office, it was right at the height of COVID. Ideally, we would have done it then. But the decision, the administration made it, made a decision not to, not to layer on additional costs to the, to the community. What we did, however, is is begin the project to the analysis to increase fee, to, to, to develop the proposal to increase fees in twenty twenty three. So as COVID was winding down, that, that involved, and I am happy to go into more detail, either here or offline. But that involves convening a thirty five member stakeholder advisory group that, that learned all about the program, that had a substantive input on the development of the rates and the rate structure. They met six times over the course of last year and and really their fingerprints are all over this proposal. They, they, they wanted a fifty fifty split between base and fixed, to reduce the reduced charge for the ADUs as, as, as the neighborhood board member mentioned and several other things. So we kicked off this, the proposal to raise the rates in earnest right at the end of COVID because we saw that it might be viable around now, now that we're clear of the pandemic. But fair point, ideally, we would have done it earlier, but circumstances, we just made the decision that circumstances didn't allow it.
Okay. Any, yeah, wait, hang on, was there a question? Oh.
Yep, thank you. So at minimum, Bill sixty has to be passed three times at council. So it was introduced in November of twenty twenty four, it passed its first reading. It's, it was scheduled for an informational briefing earlier this year where there was no vote. And so it's currently pending with the committee on budget. Now, a possible way that it could pass is the committee on budget puts it on the agenda, hears it, passes it. Assuming it doesn't get referred to another committee, it would probably go to full council for a third and final vote. We, we think that the earliest it could probably pass and become effective is July first, but it's looking more like probably later, if it does, assuming it passes later this year or the beginning of next, for the effective date of the rates.
What one more thing I wanted, so this rate of increase that you have mentioned, and it's already, it's fixed. There's no negotiation by the council or the council can adjust accordingly?
Oh yeah, it can be adjusted. So the proposal is, as I mentioned, in a, in bill form, the, and the rate, the specific rates are listed in the bill. The rates can be amended at any time until the bill becomes law. I should, I feel compelled to also say that we, you know, we study this extensively, convene stakeholder group, as I mentioned, we have a team of expert consultants and bankers looking at this. And the rates are as low as they possibly can be. There, there is a scenario where, for example, like the first year or two of the, of the proposed rates. I mentioned it's, it's six consecutive years of nine percent. Where the first year, maybe two could be a little bit lower, but then, but then years three and four would need to be commensurately higher. And so that, we don't want to avoid that, that's, that's. So we've made the decision at the department to, to keep, keep the increases flat and steady. We, the, the, kind of the the counterpoint to that is rate shock, you have it go up, you know, six, six percent one year and then thirteen percent the next, which is not good. We just want to do nine, you know, nines for consistent planning. But again, it's, these rates are in the form of a bill in front of city council and they can change at any time until they're passed.
Okay, question?
Yeah, it's a great question. And so I'll preface this by saying, there's, there's detailed financial information on our website at these flyers, which I would encourage you to grab on the way out. But basically, our, our cash reserves are dwindling. Our operating costs are going up, are, including our, our debt costs. I mentioned a big part of how we pay for our construction program is, is taking on debt, either taking out loans or, or issuing bonds, which, which is basically debt that we have to pay back. And so, and that's called debt service, right? Whether it's a loan or a bond, that debt service, as we, as we progress into this really aggressive capital program, which I mentioned ten billion dollars over the next three years, that debt service slowly but surely increases. And the money that we're bringing in right now will, will very soon not be enough to cover that. So that's why we need to, that's why we need to raise rates. Ten years, yes. And so and so, so built into these, into these nine percents and then the eight, seven, six, five is inflation. But also the, the other operating costs that are going to increase, like our, just our day to day operating, but also our, our debt service for our construction program. So it's all, it's all part of what we call the, the revenue requirement. So we have this revenue requirement, which is, which is basically, it looks at all our costs, our, our operating costs, our debt service costs. And what, you know, including what we pay our employees, our electricity, everything like that. All of that costs, and then we have, what is the amount of revenue that's required to cover those costs, the revenue requirement? Yep.
All right, so we're gonna have to move on, but wanted to thank Mike, thanks very much for coming out, appreciate it. Appreciate the information. And as Mike mentioned, there are some flyers over here and there's a website as well as a QR code here for more info. So thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, so we are going to move on to a presentation on a Kalani High School project, the Ocean Flow Project Presentation by Reed and Jude. Are you here? Yes, you are. Yeah, he has a slides.
Um, hello.
Hello.
I am Jude Winler and this is and we just wanted to share our ongoing projects from Kalani High School. Today we will be talking about a multitude of things such as our problem, the purpose, geographic and social aspects, root causes, existing solutions, our solution and our short term goals and our final goal. So the problem we found was the ever growing amount of plastic pollution washing ashore, especially on like windward beaches such as Waimea Alaika. These ocean currents like coming with the trade winds carry massive amounts of marine debris and these find their ways onto these shores. So we wanted to find a solution. So our purpose to this project is that Jude and I, we love to be in the ocean from surfing to diving to fishing and really just anything. And to do this, we need a clean and safe environment. And we also just want to help and conserve the oceans that we have. So the essential came up, the essential question we came up with to help solve this problem and guide our project was how can we reduce the amount of plastic pollution seen on beaches throughout Oahu? So some geographic and social aspects. So mass amounts of rain carry plastic and human waste directly into the ocean and these end up on beaches. Currently, there is no reliable garbage system in Hawaii and hotels use millions of many toiletry bottles each year. So some of the stakeholders and parts of like this project that are important are some local businesses. With more tourists coming to the beach, there will be, there, they will be, keep visiting more and more businesses. And with this in mind, they may want to work with us. Also, commercial fishermen, they'll be a crucial part of our solution because they're a main and leading factor of this pollution. So some root causes to ocean pollution. So commercial fishermen, as mentioned, they produce twenty percent of the ocean pollution. This is by far one of the deadliest pollutants we see in the ocean. People have also become plastic dependent and forty percent of the plastic is single-use. This plastic often ends up in landfills, forests, rivers and most commonly oceans. Some of the existing solutions we found were that the EPA creates programs and laws protect the environment. But we've seen that these are sometimes not so successful because they're more broad and federal. We've also seen that many beach cleanups remove pollutants from beaches, but they do not address many root causes. They just clean it up without actually stopping it from getting on the beach. So we came up with an innovative solution and we want to create a reliable recycling system for old fishing gear at Port Surat Oahu. The mission statement we came up with to also just drive our project is our mission is reduce, reduce fishing pollution for a safer and cleaner environment on Waimea Manalo and across Hawaii. So our solution, our solution will directly decrease plastic pollution found on beaches. A port will have four dumpsters or trash cans, one for fishing line, another for ropes and nets, one for hooks and metals and one for miscellaneous fishing supplies. Our solution, our solution is different because it reduces pollution from a root cause rather than just targeting and trying to fix the problem from like a higher branch rather than right at the source. So some of our stakeholders in our solution, so we have Brian Kang and Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii to introduce, promote and support our solution. So some of our short-term goals, we, we've completed some of these, drafted email to Brian Kang and Sustainable Coastlines asking for their mentorship because Brian Kang was so, he is, he's very busy. He, he had to deny, but we got a mentor from Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii. And Rebecca, like her name is Rebecca Matos, but she agreed to be our mentor and help us along the way. So we want to continue speaking with Rebecca Matos and draft an email for our permit to implement Ocean Flow to a harbor. The harbor we are planning on to do this is Almoana Bowls. And we, after this, we want to help and look for places where we can put our solution in good convenient areas. Some more short-term goals. We'd like to plan where and how to set up these bins, gather materials and create informative posters that show how to use our bins. We'd also like to educate commercial and hobbyist fishermen about our solution. And then we would finally like to implement our solution and turning these bins to a reality and get them into use. After we have implemented our solution, we want to collect and analyze data. We want to collect data and how much weight we collected in fishing gear in pounds. We are going to create a log that fishermen can use to maybe just log out what they put in our bins and we can see how much use that had. And we might also create an online poll at Bowls Harbor asking citizens if they have heard of our solution. So our long-term goals, we would like to like fully implement our Ocean Flow into one harbor, just make sure that's up and running very successfully. We'd like to have at least ten fishermen to utilize our idea and we'd like to raise awareness about ocean pollution and our solution. So in conclusion, a problem that we have seen is polluted beaches and oceans in Oahu. And a root cause of this is the commercial fishing industry and us as individuals. And our solution was to create a reliable recycling system for old fishing gear in ports throughout Oahu. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
All right. Thanks very much, Reed and Jude. Any, any questions for Reed? Oh, Becky, Becky, go ahead. Oh, hang on, hang on. One, one question online. And then, oh, wait, hang on, hang on. Yeah, hang on, Woody. Okay, go ahead.
For me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. I just wanted to say my daughter's at Kalani, so I got excited when they said Kalani. And, you know, I asked her about these projects that you're doing. So I, I just thought it was great. I thought your presentation was awesome. I just liked the, the whole like from start to finish and your goals and that you're reaching out to stakeholders. The Sustainable Coastlines operations are really tight. And I, I like to, you know, see that you kind of followed some of their models with like the wing of this stuff. So I thought that was really cool. And I was just gonna recommend maybe since you're now presenting at a neighborhood board with the affected areas, maybe you could reach out to neighborhood boards and see if they could pass some resolutions. You could maybe find some examples online and draft up one-page resolutions that you could do a similar presentation at, get them to pass reso that demonstrates a problem or a need. And then you come in with your solution and you're already like there with a solution. So that would just be one recommendation for your advocacy and just again, good job.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Becky. Woody, go ahead.
Thank you so much. This is amazing initiative. Congratulations. How are you planning to collect the, and use the fishing gears? Are you collecting all these bins?
So we have not set these bins up yet. We would like to, we're on like the road to. We'd like to get them up probably by early May or late March or maybe like, or in April, but whatever. But we would like to collect and measure this data just by, I guess, collecting it ourselves. Maybe like recycling it, giving it to like local artists to use for their projects, but that's kind of our plan. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions in person or online? Oh, we got one in the box. Go ahead. All right. Any other questions? Nothing online? Anything in person? Right? If not, thank you very much. Very informative. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. So we're gonna move on to another presentation from Follow the Drop Initiative. It's an update from Sage. Sage, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Let me share my screen so I can show my presentation. Is everybody seeing that okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And thank you Chair, Board members and community members for having me. My name is Sage. I work with Hawaii Green Growth, which is a nonprofit under the Follow the Drop Initiative. So for those who don't know, we have three main goals. The first to be recharging our aquifers where we're getting a hundred percent of our drinking water from in the islands. The second is to help property owners reducing the amount of flooding that may be occurring on their properties. And the third is to decrease the amount of brown water runoff that's coming from properties and contributing to ocean pollution. So we work specifically in Alauai watershed that encompasses these eleven neighborhoods. We use the app also called Follow the Drop in our free rainwater assessments where we walk around the exterior of the property, looking at downspouts and other outlets of water to hopefully by the end of the assessment, identify things called green stormwater infrastructures. And these things are rain gardens, rain barrels, perable pavement. They all have the ability to hopefully help reach the goal of recharging aquifers, reducing flooding for property owners and reducing the amount of runoff that's coming from properties. So through our assessments, we are seeing that rain catchments or rain barrels are the most popular and cost-effective, usually the easiest project to implement into a home. However, perable pavement, while being a much pricier usually project, has the capacity to capture the most amount of runoff coming from properties. So currently, we have assessed over sixty, sixty properties within the watershed. That comes out to about one point six million square feet of impervious surface. So those are areas like your roof and your driveways. That comes to about twenty-eight football fields. And from all that impervious area, there's about forty-four million gallons of runoff coming off of those properties, which equals to about sixty-six Olympic-sized swimming pools. From the data that we've collected at these sixty properties, we are seeing that rain barrels, the rain catchments have the potential to capture about twenty-nine percent of runoff. Rain gardens do a little bit better capturing about sixty-eight percent of runoff. And then, as I was mentioning, perable pavement does the best at capturing runoff at about sixty, seventy-six percent. What I really wanted to talk about today was our Smart Yard workshop and invite everybody out for March first, that's a Saturday, within a couple of weeks. From nine AM to twelve PM, we will be holding a workshop where we're gonna talk about how to use the app that we use during our assessments, how to install and design rain gardens, how to install and install rain barrels and just talk story with people, get to know them a little bit. We have also a raffle where people have the potential to win a free rain barrel and a diverter kit. So this is happening at Alii Olani Elementary School. And you can register the link there on the screen. We are actually helping that school to build a rain garden at the back of their cafeteria. So hopefully that will be starting around summertime. That would be the, the beginning parts of it. The other program that I want to highlight is Malama Manalua's. It's another nonprofit that, their incentive program. So this opened up about a couple of weeks ago. You might have seen it in your water bill or on the news. There's a lot of coverage around it. So this has given people the opportunity to get a free rain barrel, a free rain garden or tree installation for anybody that lives on Oahu for free. So they, Malama Manalua was able to receive a grant to help people out. Part of that process and that application is actually doing a rainwater assessment. And even if you live outside the watershed, which most of you don't, most of you live in Pololo or you know people that live outside the watershed but will really benefit from this program, we have been helping people do virtuous. So after you do the rains, rainwater assessment for free, you'll go to that website linked below and you'll apply. And of course, we're always happy to help people apply. Sometimes the process may be a little bit confusing. So that's all I have today. I, I can answer any questions. I'll drop some links in the chat. But we look forward and hopefully seeing you on March first, if not.
All right. Thank you very much, Sage. Appreciate the info. Any questions for Sage and the Follow the Drop Initiative updates? From the board? Online, in person? Oh, Judy, go ahead.
Hi, Sage. Thank you so much for the presentation. I want to ask you a question. I know that a lot of times these rain barrels are going to be very efficient for, for water usage and what have you. But I'm wondering, like, a lot of times, I know on Kaimaki, when we do have rains, there is a lot of mosquito larvae that grow into the, grow into the, into the buckets. So how do you guys prevent that from happening? Because a lot of times when we do have a lot of rain, usually larvae is actually produced and then it's back in the atmosphere. So how, how do you guys combat that?
So, yeah, of course. Thank you for your question. There is about two ways to set up a barrel. The first one is you cut the downspout right to above the barrel. And in that situation, they have mosquito nets or people have said to put drops of Dawn soap just so that the top layer of that water doesn't allow them to kind of sit on it, right? So they're not being able to stick and have eggs on there. The second is a diverter kit. That one is you're just drilling like a little hole in your downspout and the hose connects directly into the barrel. And those are usually a closed system, so you're not having to deal with the mosquitoes. We definitely need to take in consideration mosquitoes, especially in Hawaii. So there's been a lot of thought and different ways to prevent that because we, we understand that that can be an issue.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Sage? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Sage. Appreciate the update.
You so much.
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna move on the agenda to the next item, elected officials' reports. So the first representative is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Is Brian McKee online?
He is online. I'm here to hear guys.
All right, Brian, go ahead. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. Well, thanks for having me, members of the board, people online, members of the public. Just going through the highlights here, we, we did have, well, hundreds of firefighters, first responders, friends and family gathered for the, the Honolulu Fire Department headquarters last time for, for Jeffrey Fialas kind of send-off. It was, it was a pretty emotional time. It was a great honor to be part of that. A lot of personnel aligned South Street, Queen Street and, and gave him a really nice send-off. So, you know, he will be missed and he, he casted a giant shadow during his, his time with us. So that was, that was very, very moving. We had our Chinese New Year, so the Lunar New Year was celebrated. That there was a whole bunch of events surrounding the mayor and the governor and, and them. Of course, the mayor was sworn in for a second term. I don't know if anybody got to see that. I was actually honored to be there because I got sworn in too. So there's that. Scott Nishimoto, former Hawaii State Representative, joined the Honolulu City Council. So he's kind of the new guy over there. We had some groundbreaking for more affordable housing. So there's going to be a new six-story, ninety-unit project in Makiki at the corner of Pensacola and Wilder Avenue. They broke ground and, you know, just a couple of weeks ago. So I was, you might have seen that in the news. If you're familiar with the, the Queen Surf Sea Wall, it's, it's gonna be repaired. So that's gonna actually start a Sea Engineering Incorporated is gonna be the contractor. They're gonna fill in a cavity that was on the promenade and, and that should run for a couple of months. Gavin Thornton joins the City Office of Economic Revitalization. And he's, he's a talented guy. We're looking forward to getting him on board. And, you know, there's some other things like, you know, we bought a new garbage truck. I don't think anybody really, you know, I mean, it's important to us, but then we're gearing up for the Aloha United Way. You know, that's just kicking out right now. And, you know, I'm here for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Brian. Any questions for Brian McKee, the mayor's representative by the board or the public? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the updates.
My pleasure.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to City Council Chair Tommy Waters' office.
Thank you Chair Kang, Vice Chair Ho and members of the board, Adam Do from the Office of Council Chair Tommy Waters' office. I do want to congratulate your new member. We do look forward to working with you. The Kaimaki Neighborhood Board is an awesome board. Chair Waters does live in Kaimaki. I do want to give a reminder to your board members and your new member that the neighborhood board registration does close this Friday, February twenty-first. I believe Chair Kang or Jeffrey will make an announcement on that later. Okay, so Ma'oume Nature Park and its fire break. The Department of Parks and Recreation, DPR, reports it is in queue for bidding and contract work. There are currently four requests ahead of Ma'oume Park, but we are really excited that DPR is going through with this fire break. We do want to thank Division Kaimaki and their director, Laura Yamada, and all of their volunteers and community members along with DPR for working with our office. And Amanda. Secondly, our full council is next week, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. Uh, secondly, our full council is next week, Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. Um, there's a resolution for appointments to the Honolulu City Charter. Which is our local um, constitution, which guides our city government operations. So every ten years, the mayor and city council appoint a commission to review it and propose amendments for charter approval. The next commission questions will appear on the, the November twenty-twenty-six ballot. Uh, the charter commission has thirteen members. Six appointed by the mayor, six appointed by the city council and one um, jointly by both. An example um, for these charter questions would be um, in two thousand sixteen, an amendment to propose. Um, or an amendment was proposed by the charter commission and approved by the voters. Um, which created um, the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. Um, and then a few bills I wanted to talk about first would be Bill fifteen. Um, twenty-twenty-five for first reading, which would amend the ROH Chapter Six. To add a new article establishing the Climate Resiliency Fund, specifically allowing monies for the Climate Resiliency Fund to be used to fund a grant program for cesspool conversion. Uh, this is really important, uh, even if you don't have a cesspool. Um, cesspools do things like contaminate our water, drinking water. They um, contaminate our ocean uh, and uh, create threats to our coral reefs. Um, the nutrition and bacteria from cesspools, pools um, contribute to algae blooms which suffocate our coral reefs. And then last, uh, lastly, we have two bills, um, one for second reading, um, Bill Four, twenty-twenty-five. And a resolution, um, twenty-five, um, dash fifty, which is up for final adoption. Um, and what, so what Bill Four does is establishes a process for the city to obtain sponsorships for city facilities and parks. Um, includes guidelines and procedures to opti- optimize the program for revenue generation. And um, Bill Fif- or Bill Twenty-five dash fifty. Uh, this would urge the Department of Enterprise Services to pursue the sponsorship and naming rights of the Neil Blaisdell Center. Um, so what Chair Waters and the council is trying to do is to raise revenue for the city without increasing taxes and fees. So this is just one piece of legislation um, that we're introducing this month. Uh, we have a few more um, that you'll hear me talking about as we introduce them in the upcoming months. Um, we're trying to think of creative ways to generate money for the city. Um, to help offset things like the outrageous sur- um, in the suru fee increases. Um, it's very important for Tommy to lower the cost of living um, for residences. Um, and with that, uh, I'm happy to bring back any questions to Chair Waters.
All right. Thank you very much, Adam. Uh, any questions for Adam? We have a couple of folks online. So Becky, go ahead.
Hi, Adam. Thank you for that. Um, there were two bills that I was, or maybe it wasn't a bill, but those two things. The first one was your report on Malma Park. And the second thing was on this sponsorship bill and I didn't catch the bill number. Um, but on the park. I remember maybe a couple of months ago, there was a presentation by someone who's trying to set up a zen archery park or zen archery facility in that park. Um, so when you talk about the firewall, it, it seems like there's, you know, activity happening. Uh, so it's very exciting. If, you know, maybe we're gonna get a facelift for that park. So I'm just thinking, if there's any real potential of that archery facility getting set up. Maybe you could coordinate with the efforts for this firewall and I don't know. Somehow make it like, let's just say zen and flowy. Um, so yeah, so that was the thing on the park. I think that would be great. I, I really like the idea of having an archery, like a quiet archery facility there. Um, the second thing, the bill, like, I didn't quite catch it, but I think you said something about sponsorships. And maybe it was like with the park and it, it might be very similar to a bill I was following maybe ten years ago. Um, about sponsorships in parks and it was pretty controversial. I forget what the green groups were, but they didn't like this idea of having signage in our parks. Um, but I think Kamaki Community Park is an exception to that sort of, you know, distaste for it. Uh, because it's already like in between banks and pizza parlors and, you know, the on-ramp and all this other stuff. It's a very commercial area, the Kamaki Business District. So I'm just, I just wanna put in a plug that maybe we could use those sponsorship ideas with that park, around that park. So that's, that's all. And if there's any thoughts of maybe passing a reso, that would help advance that. Um, you know, get in touch with me and maybe I can help that.
Yeah, thank you, Becky. So I believe you're talking about the Honolulu QO Sojro uh, presentation. Uh. Uh, we have um, been in lots of discussion um, with the presenter. Um, I believe um, Envision Kamaki is also working with him as well. Uh, he's um, planning on going around and talking to uh, the immediate community. Um, after speaking to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board, I believe at your January meeting. Um, Chair Waters has a meeting um, with them as well upcoming and they have met with the mayors. Pardon?
Well, I'm sorry. I meant to be, my laptop's gonna die. My Star is going to my charger. Sorry.
Okay, and then, um, so the two bills that I was talking about as well, so Bill Four. Um, what that does also is uh, it requires for any naming of a facility, a city facility or park to come before the council. Um, and the city council would have to approve it. Also, if, for example, um, the Kamaki Neighborhood Board um, liked or disliked the naming of Kamaki Park. Um, that would be your opportunity to um, voice your concerns or support of that. Um, and then the other resolution, um, twenty-five fifty was specifically for the Neil's Neil Blaisdell Center. So that would be similar to um, the Stan Sheriff's Center, uh, where they have a naming rights um, with Bank of Hawaii.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Um, so we're gonna have to move on. So last question, I believe, Pua. Did you have your hand up?
No, sorry. I didn't have my hand up.
Okay, okay. So we're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Adam. Appreciate it. Um, but um, I did wanna mention that I did receive a letter dated January thirty-first from Roger Moynton over at the Department of Transportation Services, uh, saying that based on a referral from Chair Waters' office. Um, that office did investigate uh, concerns about vehicles parked on uh, Pukolu Place. Uh, and difficulties with the um, refused vehicles accessing that. Uh, so DTS did investigate and they will be prohibiting parking along the odd-numbered side of Pukolu Place uh, to resolve the matter. So I just wanted to mention that. Uh, since it was a referral from Chair Waters' office. So uh, thanks very much. And we'll post the letter onto our Google Drive. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're gonna move on to uh, Governor Josh Green's representative. Amanda Stevens is Amanda.
Aloha, everyone. Um, aloha to the Neighborhood Board Chair, Vice Chair, members and those who are in attendance. Um, I have shared in the chat four links and I'm gonna quickly go through them. The first one is about the news release from Governor Green about the state expedited hiring of those who may have lost their jobs in the federal government. So that is going, that's the first press release and if you could um, read and share, that would be wonderful. The second one um, of importance is the warning to the public for the latest phone scams. This one might not be so new to um, some of you because I've heard um, of others speaking about it. About sheriff impersonators and extortion scam alert. But the reason why Governor Green sent out the news release is just, it's been happening so much. And it's really aimed towards Kupuna. I myself got a scam alert on my uh, text today about Fast Track. And saying that I have a ticket to click it. And of course, I knew not to click it. But at the same time, it, it's getting really bad out there and please be uh, vigilant. Um, the, the third link I'm sharing is the governor's newsletter and you'll have a lot of updates in there. The last thing I wanted to share is something of relevance as it relates to childcare. Um, the average cost of preschool is about eleven hundred dollars or more a month. And the preschool um, open pro- preschool open doors program has increased the income limit. So um, more families are eligible. It's also expanded to three and four-year-old children. And more information is on the links. And I'd like to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Amanda. Any questions for, or concerns for the governor's representative in person or online? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Amanda. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. Okay, so we're gonna move on to State Senator Chanley, Stanley Chang's office.
Hi, everyone. Aloha. This is Zephany Smith Eisenstadt. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, oh, well, it's delight to be with you all uh, for the first time. I'm the Senator's Legislative Aithis Session and as you are likely aware, we are, the twenty-twenty-five legislate, um, Legislative Session is well underway. Um, I just wanna share a couple of resources with you and be, would be happy to take any questions or requests. First of all, um, if you visit SenatorChang.com, you'll have access to our uh, January and February district newsletters. And you will also be able to subscribe. A particular note, um, in the February twenty-twenty-five district newsletter. Um, the senator was pleased to announce a one point uh, zero-five million dollar capital improvement project. Uh, this is funding that will be released to Kamaki Middle School. Um, and this is for the design and construction of a STEM lab and fifty thousand, uh, for improvements to the STEM lab. And fifty thousand dollars of financing for new wrestling equipment. So that's very um, exciting for this neighborhood. There are a number of senior citizens clubs that are meeting in East Honolulu. Um, in Inahaina every Friday and, and Kilauea on Tuesday mornings. Um, Wednesdays at Coco Head District Park. So that schedule is available in the district newsletter. Uh, we just had a wonderful uh, celebration and commemoration of the Lunar New Year at the Capitol. So be sure to follow Senator Chang's Instagram, uh, social media along with this website to stay abreast of some of the happenings. Um, we are looking forward to receiving back to the Housing Committee any of the bills that um, continue to be processed through the Legislative Session. Um, right now, uh, we're in a period where the Housing Committee um, will not be having hearings this week or next. Um, as the bills that we've passed through are being heard by um, Ways and Means and Judiciary and some of the other larger committees. So we're looking forward to resuming those hearings. And those who are interested in participating in the legislative process can reach out to the Public Access Room or otherwise um, create an account on the legislature's website, which will allow you to uh, register for updates about the various committees, including the ones that Senator Chang participates on and helps to lead. Um, as well as to, more importantly, submit testimony for those issues and ideas that are of concern to you, whether it be in the House or the Senate. Uh, this year, uh, this month's newsletter also includes information about the early childhood educator stipend. Um, the resource for filmmakers, um, and, and provide some highlights on the recent UH Manoa Day at the Capitol. And then uh, specifically, if you're interested in the work of the Housing Committee, there is a Housing Newsletter that goes out every Wednesday. Um, these articles are compiled by the senator. Um, talking about things, whether it's from local to global, that again, may be adventurous. So uh, we're happy to be here and we're happy to be a resource. We're in room two twenty-six at the state Capitol on the second floor. And happy to um, be a resource in, in whatever way would be helpful to you all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for uh, State Senator Stanley Chang's office? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. Thanks for the updates. Uh, let's see. So State Senator Lesihara sends his regrets. He was uh, not able to attend uh, this evening. So we're gonna move to uh, State Representative Tina Grandinetti or her representative?
Hello, everyone. I'm Emily Cristobal. I'm the Office Manager for Representative Tina Grandinetti. And I'm here as her representative tonight. Um, she actually has a stomach flu right now, so she is recovering from that at home. Um, I'm actually really excited to be here because I live in the area. I live in Third Ave. Me and my partner are here, so it's really cool to see what's going on in the community and actually being a part of it. Um, just to give some background about who I am, I actually have a background in communications. And I previously come from Hawaii News Now, working as a digital producer. I was there for four years and I kinda just felt like I wanted to do something more and be a part of the community. So here I am as the Office Manager for Representative Grandinetti. Um, just some notes that she's been sharing with me. Uh, she is the Vice Chair of Transportation this session. Uh, some of the big things that she's been keeping an eye out are e-bike regulation. Uh, we've talked with Eduardo at the Hawaii Bicycle League. And uh, one of the big bills that we're hoping to get passed along is our Safe Routes, uh, Safe Streets for All, which also includes uh, safe routes to school, which will help provide funding for that program. Uh, we just really believe that um, safe routes are for everyone. And we just wanna be able to have this infrastructure for pedestrians and bicyclists and anybody who um, uses our roadways. Um, one of her top priorities is of course, housing. Uh, one of the big bills that we're really hoping for to see become a law is HB thirteen twenty-five. Um, we call it Right to Return. So that's basically creating a standard for how tenants should be treated if they are displaced by two oh one H projects, which are affordable housing projects uh, from HHFDC. Uh, an example of that is Kui Le Place. Um, we've been hearing a lot of very passionate testimony from KPT, which is Kohio Park Terrace out in Kalihii. Um, those residents um, could become displaced or uh, as that project moves along. And we just wanna make sure that those people are treated fairly and that their rights are respected. Uh, two other bills um, support the expansion of community land trusts, which create a pool of permanently affordable housing for local people, which is very important. Um, Representative Grandinetti is born and raised in Hawaii, so am I and so is my partner. And housing is probably one of the biggest things that we're worried about as we figure out if we're able to afford to live here one day. Um, and buy a home of our own. Uh, Representative Grandinetti is also in, a member of the Finance Committee. Um, and as a five-day recess approaches starting tomorrow, she will be in finance hearings all day. Um, she is also part of the Working Families Caucus. Uh, we're supporting the push for paid family leave along with Aki Caucus, which she's also a part of. Um, she's also a part of the Good Government Caucus. Uh, most of the bills in that official package haven't survived, including the one to close the loophole on pay-to-play donation. But a bill to support civic education in schools is still alive, which is exciting as I think it's super important that our young people get involved in this. And I think it's really awesome to see those Kalani High School students here. Um, and we've actually been getting some constituent concerns regarding just the state of the world that we're living in right now and the impacts of some of, you know, you've seen in national headlines and federal funding. Um, and how there's being cuts in that sector and how it affects us here back at home in Hawaii. So just to give some insight on that, twenty to thirty percent of our state budget comes from federal funds. Um, and she and other lawmakers have been briefed briefed by US Representative Jill Takuta and Representative Ed Case, as well as Lieutenant Governor and Attorney General. And that's basically all that I have for notes. But here to help, we're room three oh five at the State Capitol. Uh, you can call us, call us at eight oh eight five eight six six three one zero. It's probably gonna be me who answers the phone. You can also send us an email at grandaddy at capital dot Hawaii dot gov. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Emily. Uh, any questions or comments for Representative Grandinetti's office? All right. Uh, Zoe? Hello, Zoe. Did you?
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hi, I um just wanted to ask, I know you just said Rep. Grandinetti is part of the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, I just sent an email to Chair Yamashita. Is that his name?
Yes.
Yes, um, about House Bill seven five seven um for him to schedule, make time to schedule a hearing for that bill because it's they're not accepting testimony yet because it's not on the schedule. Um, and when I called today, I asked who's in charge? Like, I don't know how things work, but I was wondering who's in charge of like getting it on the schedule? I know you guys have a ton of like bills that are super important, but like this one's really important, excuse me, to me. So I was wondering like who do who was I supposed to call or email to like show that I so not just supported, but just, you know, to get it heard?
Absolutely. No, great question. Um, Cherry Yamashita is the one who chooses which bills get heard. But as uh Representative Grandinetti is a member, she can definitely um I guess talk to Representative Yamashita if that is to try and entice him to get that bill heard. But we will definitely keep that on our radar and I'll definitely keep a note of that and hopefully we can get that bill heard.
Thank you. I'll forward the email I sent to him to her too then.
Yeah.
That everyone just I just want to throw as many little, you know, uh feelers out that I can.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it's pretty common. Yeah, we've been having people as a finance uh hearings are set to commence. We've been having people come by, drop off flyers, uh just giving some information.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Emily. Appreciate it. All right, so we will move on to uh Representative Jackson Sayama.
Evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Jackson Sayama. Uh, tonight, just a few resources that I have on the table of to your back. We have first the Fraud Prevention and Resource Guide. As the Governor's Office was saying, you know, there's a lot of fraudulent uh schemes right now going on. So it's always good to, you know, understand uh what to look out for and how to respond if you find yourself in a situation that uh you've been caught in a fraud scheme. Um, next, we do have the Senior Information Assistance Handbook or the Kupuna Handbook. Uh, very useful resources for Kupuna, uh even if you are not Kupuna yourself. You know, I'm sure everyone knows someone who is. So, you know, it's always a useful resource and handbook to have on hand. Unfortunately, I don't have too many copies, so first come, first served. Uh, but this year, you know, I'm uh chairing the Labor Committee, so we are hearing a lot a lot of issues. Uh, though I think my primary focus has been uh passing forward my paid family leave bill. Uh, like was mentioned earlier, um, I'm a member, also a member of the Kiki Caucus, and I've introduced this paid family leave bill that I think, you know, has been worked on at least for a decade. Uh, so this is a continuation of the work from the previous Chair of Labor, uh Chair Matayoshi. Uh, so it's passed my committee, the CPC Committee, and now it's move on to the Finance Committee. So we are uh very hopeful that we'll be getting a hearing sometime uh this week or next week. Uh, so again, uh, I think it's a really big bill that uh people should be paying attention to because it does directly affect uh working families and uh families with kids in Kupuna. So I think that might be all of us. Uh, other than that, um, there are a number of issues on the labor side, uh mostly coming from the federal government. Uh, as I'm sure you saw in the newspaper this morning and perhaps late last night, um, there are a lot of uh federal workers that are being laid off in Hawaii alone. There are at least ten thousand. Uh, so a lot of them do work in conjunction with our state departments. Uh, University of Hawaii has a lot of positions that are federally funded as well. So the state this year is trying to take a conservative approach to our budget to shore up funds. Uh, in the most likely case, these guys do get fired, we could, the state could basically hire them uh at least temporarily until they're the funding for these positions are returned on the federal side. Um, but again, these guys are local residents, just like you and me. So we want to make sure that they are, you know, uh resuming the jobs that they've been tasked with and that they're trained for. Uh, but again, uh, I think we're just trying to do our best to uh be proactive uh to some of the federal actions that are be taken. Um, the Attorney General uh has been joining a coalition of states to file lawsuits uh against uh this president and his administration for certain actions that they're taking, especially with regards to uh Doge and um perhaps uh under the leadership of Elon Musk. Uh, so again, that's what's happening on the federal side locally. We're trying to do our best uh to react to that as well as to continue to address issues of cost of living uh for our local families. Uh, so please continue to stay engaged uh in the legislative process. If you do have bills that are of interest to you, feel free to reach out to my office. We'll help you attract those for you. Uh, also, I think it was uh presented earlier with Green Growth Hawaii. Uh, we do have also in our newsletter on the back table a QR code to their services. So feel free to take one of those uh if you haven't already. With that, I'm available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Representative Sayama. Becky, you have a question?
Hi, yeah. Um, I wasn't sure if I heard it right. Did did you say you were chairing the CPC Committee this year?
Oh, no, I was uh I'm chairing the Labor Committee. I was acting chair for CPC last year.
Okay, okay. All right. So, okay. So this year, you're chairing the Labor Committee. So I was someone had forwarded to me a social media post of you saying something on the record about not being qualified and it it didn't paint you in a very positive light. And I know social media can be very vicious. So I I think it could be a good opportunity for you to address it and maybe provide context because I don't know, it was chopped up and there's like, you know, yucky font on it. And you know, I I don't know, I I think it's good I to give you the opportunity to provide context and um, you know, help clarify.
Sure. And for those who may not know, uh what Becky is referring to or or Board Member Garner is referring to is the nurse staffing ratio bill. Uh, that was heard uh in my committee as well as there's a joint committee hearing between mine and health, labor and health. Uh, the decision uh for that hearing was to defer the measure effectively, right? The bill is no longer allowed for this legislative session. Uh, the nurse staffing ratio bill, as it was drafted, would be a legislative mandate for all uh state hospitals and uh healthcare facilities. Uh, determining, right, as the name suggests, staffing ratios. So one nurse per every five patients in med surg or one to two ratio in uh surgical operations, something like that. Um, the decision to defer and the quote, I believe that's being circulated on social media is the issue of qualifications that I had mentioned. Uh, as a legislator, I didn't feel it was appropriate to be making a medical decision, right? We as legislators do do not understand how the staffing ratios between one surgical unit and oncology, for example, play out in a very dynamic workplace like a hospital in which staffing ratios and you know, it it's very dynamic. It changes on a day-to-day and hour-to-hour. So there are admittedly some states with staffing ratios, but oftentimes I think it's comparing apples to oranges because, say, California has a lot more hospitals per capita than Hawaii. Just right, we can't send our patients to another hospital like California can just because of geographic restrictions, especially for the rural uh communities on the neighbor islands. So that's not to say that the workplace environment is stressful, right? Especially nursing. Uh, so there is definitely a nursing shortage that we are trying to address and there are many bills going through this session right now to expand that pipeline. Uh, because ninety percent of our nurses who are qualified are already working. And we need at least another thousand uh to staff up to what is believed to be proper staffing ratios. So even if we were to pass the staffing ratio bill today, we don't have enough nurses to staff it. Like, it's impossible uh unless we fly out nurses from the mainland to come here. I don't think that's necessarily the policy that we're trying to go for. So again, we're trying to develop and grow that local nursing workforce. And so that's the bills that we're trying to push forward. However, I do want to say in the meantime, I am trying to work during the interim to address the very toxic uh work working environment for nurses uh to, and I'm trying to do that not through staffing ratios, but through addressing the state certifications for hospitals, right? Hospitals need to be certified by state and the federal and our federal accreditation boards. And so if we could amend those criterias for certification or accreditation, I think that's the better way to do it rather than a legislative mandate. Because these accreditation organizations and institutions have the expertise, have the education and background to make these decisions. So that's my approach and perhaps a little bit more context to our decision to defer nurse staffing ratio. Again, uh, I could go into more detail, but I don't want to take up more of your board's time.
All right. Thank you, Representative. Uh, any final questions for Representative Sayama? Audrey, go ahead.
I just hear say maybe that I hear from some parents and younger people that it's not easy to get into nursing program, KCC or the University of Hawaii or even HPU, I guess. So are there um ideas to help expand the departments perhaps or that we can expand our education for nurses locally?
Yeah.
Would that help? I mean, because I heard it's really difficult to get in, so.
Yeah, so the one of the biggest uh issues or factors limiting our capacity to grow our nursing is the amount we pay the professors who teach these courses, right? A nurse could be paid more in a hospital than teaching a class in a nursing school. So we're making pay adjustments to make that more competitive. We also have a bill this session to establish a new nursing program on Maui. We also are expanding funding for the loan repayment program uh for healthcare workers in the state, right? So if you are going into nursing and hey, you can't afford it, you could get this loan repay, you could get a loan repayment program as long as you have a condition of working in Hawaii, you know, ten years or whatever after you graduate nursing. That way we could guarantee that those going out of the nursing programs here are not just going to mean that that they're staying here and working here. So there are a number of considerations going forward for nursing.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Representative. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. Okay, so is Congressman Ed Cases representative available online? Okay, seeing nuts, we will move on to announcements. The registration to be a candidate for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven Neighborhood Board term closes this Friday, February twenty-first at four thirty PM. To register and to obtain more information, please go to the website listed on our agenda. It is a quick and easy process, so please go ahead and register to be a candidate for the board. Okay, so we'll move on to Board Business. Approval of the uh minutes or the written summaries of video record. So there's a couple of technical issues with with some of of the prior written summaries of video record. But I believe the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five summary is posted and um is available. So hopefully folks have gotten a chance to read that. Is there a motion to approve the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five uh video record? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so we'll defer the approval of the September, October and November written summaries of video records to the next meeting. Okay, reports. Uh, report of the Traffic and Transportation Committee. Audrey?
Uh, right now, we're um scheduling, uh trying to schedule a meeting next week uh for a joint committee meeting with the Diamond Head Kapahulu St. Louis Transportation Committee. Um, so there's no set date right now, but we've been in communication and trying to set that meeting up. And um we're trying to find topics that affect both our neighborhoods right now. Um, and rather than some of the topics that that only affect um Diamond Head as as opposed to Kamaki. So um I spoke to the Chair uh of the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board and um they're very excited about it and Margaret Merchi is the Chair for the their Transportation Committee. So that's about it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, members attendance at other meetings. Are there any members who attended other meetings that would like to report? Okay, seeing none. The next meeting of this board is scheduled for Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM, right here at the Kamaki Public Library uh and remotely via WebEx. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.